Good morning, everyone. I'm Senator James Scoofus, Chair of the Investigations and Government Operations Committee. I'm joined by co-chairs Brian Kavanaugh, who is Chair of the Housing Construction and Community Development Committee, as well as Co-Chair Kevin Thomas, who leads the Consumer Protection Committee. We're also joined by Ranking Member and colleague Senator Jim Tedesco. This is Part Two. This is a continuation of a hearing from last week that looks at the serious issue of housing discrimination within real estate on Long Island specifically, prompted by Newsday's investigation in late 2019. We had one panel that chose not to be with us last week, but they are with us here today, and I will introduce them in just a moment. But first, I'd just like to remind the incoming panel of the same ground rules that were in place for last week's hearing. First, after I introduce them in a moment, they will be administered an oath, and their testimony will be sworn. Each witness will be afforded up to five minutes for their opening remarks. During questions, this hearing, Chairs and Rankers will be provided 10 minutes, while members of each committee will be provided five minutes if we are joined by members. Chairs and Rankers will be afforded a second round of questions if needed. Just like at the last hearing, I would like to remind the witnesses today that they are subject to Section 21560 of the Criminal Procedure Law entitled Criminal Contempt of the Legislature. Specifically, a person is guilty of criminal contempt of the legislature when having been duly subpoenaed to attend as a witness before either House of the Legislature or before any committee thereof, he or she, one, fails or refuses to attend without lawful excuse, or, two, refuses to be sworn, or, three, refuses to answer any material and proper question, or, four, refuses after reasonable notice to produce books, papers, or documents in his or her possession or under his or her control which constitute material and proper evidence. Criminal contempt of the legislature is a Class A misdemeanor punishable by fines and jail time. So with that, I think we are prepared to hear from our first and only panel today, which are folks from Realty Connect USA. And with the company, we have Bart Cafarella, Reza Emiriavari, Joseph Janis, and Margaret Petrelli. I know we were having some trouble getting Margaret Petrelli into the Zoom today. I don't know if she's joined us yet or not, but hopefully she can. Certainly, the expectation is that she'd be with us today. Stanley, do you have any update on Ms. Petrelli?
She's being walked through the technical piece with our control room now.
Okay, very good. So while we wait for her, I will administer an oath to her after she joins us. But in the meantime, if the three gentlemen could raise your right hand for me. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give is the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
I do.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Cafarella, do you have opening remarks?
I do. I do, Senator.
Please proceed.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman Kavanaugh, Chairman Scoofus, Chairman Thomas, and members of the committee present today. I would like to start off by thanking all of you for providing us this opportunity to discuss the important issue of fair housing on Long Island, as well as Newsday's investigation and how it pertains to Realty Connect USA. If I may share just a little bit about myself, my name is Bart Cafarella. As a licensed real estate broker for over 40 years, I have always taken fair housing practices quite seriously. Everyone has the right to fair and equal treatment in all aspects of their lives, including most especially when obtaining housing. In 2010, we created Realty Connect USA. Fair and equal treatment for all, and fair housing was one of our cornerstones. This applies not only to our customers, but to our staff and all our sales agents as well. The principles of equality have, in fact, been woven into the very fabric of our firm. I believe we may have the most diverse real estate agency on Long Island. Since our inception and through the past decade, we are and have been extremely proactive in providing weekly educational training on many subjects, with fair housing being a constant component. Topics such as fair housing, buyer brokerage, illegal rentals, laws regarding advertising, fair housing rules and regulations, all protected characteristics and updated fair housing laws are some of the topics, just to name a few. In addition, since our inception, and at least on a quarterly basis, we contracted with Department of State Board Certified Trainers to facilitate our dedicated programs on fair housing for all our agents. These trainings were held in addition to our regular broker trainings. All our meetings are filmed and archived in our internal Facebook site, allowing agents who did not or were not able to attend in person to view these trainings at their convenience with 24/7 access. We strive to educate our agents not just to the law, but to the spirit of the law and well beyond what is required. This is something that Realty Connect USA has always done. I believe this committee has received some samples of the meetings Realty Connect USA has conducted and continues to conduct on a frequent and consistent basis. Our dedication to providing agents with updated, constant information about fair housing is evidenced in the hundreds of samples of documentation provided to you, which included in-person meetings, company-wide trainings, company-wide emails, company social media posts, archived training videos, and now because of COVID-19 Zoom meetings. I believe you've received our packet here. The worst thing that can happen to a homebuyer or renter is to be discriminated against or treated differently because of their color, national origin, sexual orientation, age, or gender, just to name some. They are the real victims, and this is unacceptable. So it was important for me to review the Newsday tapes in their entirety, as well as to speak to the agents individually before taking any action or passing any judgment. When I first saw the article and viewed some of the clips, I, like most people, was concerned. At face value, things may not always appear as they should. After speaking with each of the agents individually, as well as viewing each of their recordings in their entirety, I was satisfied that unequal treatment, racial bias, or steering was not at the heart of their statements with the testers. Yet, if any of the comments recorded offended anyone, I, along with the agent in question, are truly and sincerely sorry, as it certainly was not the intent. And while I do believe that unequal treatment was not at the core of any of these comments, it's clear that we all need to modify how we interact with our customers. We need to be consistent, as inconsistency can be interpreted as unequal treatment. We need to understand implicit bias and how it affects each of us and our interactions, not only with our clients and customers, but with everyone we meet. We now need only to speak about the real estate, the property, the house, and the deal, period. And so, how do we at Realty Connect USA move forward? To develop a better understanding of the issue, we scheduled a meeting with Bobby Colletti, the Chair of the Nassau County Commission on Human Rights, to discuss the issue of fair housing in Nassau County. And we volunteered our services to sit on a proposed committee to address these issues and formulate strategies moving forward. I voluntarily met with the New York State Department of State, as well as the New York State Director of Human Rights, to discuss the Newsday article. After much research, we met with Steve Glasser, Director of Housing Policy and Initiatives for E Race Racism.
If you could just wrap up in the next 20 seconds or so.
I'll do my best, Senator. And we also met with founder Elaine Gross, who provided expert testimony here just a week. In fact, we hired E Race Racism to host a workshop for our agents entitled "How Do We Build a Just Long Island?", which focused on housing discrimination, the history of housing discrimination, and included a strong segment on implicit bias. This seminar was held in February, and we look forward to doing future workshops with her organization. Having been disappointed with the Department of State training programs, we began to search for an internal mandatory fair housing course for Realty Connect USA agents that could provide just not another outdated compliance course, but a true learning experience. I wanted an interactive curriculum which provided supervision through monitoring and also would include a testing component, so that the agents would truly understand what was being taught. We contracted with Andrew Leav of Leav Law, an expert in fair housing and real estate law, and designed an online course that included all these components. We launched this course in late April, which is ongoing and mandatory for every one of our existing agents, agents that are new to our company, as well as our staff. In addition, we have updated our website, our independent contractors agreement, our in-office signage, created a "Know Before You Go" customer information sheet, and amended on onboarding proceedings to better reflect the commitment to fair housing and equal treatment for all.
I'm going to ask you to stop there if we could. Yeah, thank you. Because we do have the others to... I'm sure we'll have questions. Mr. Janis, do you have any opening statement?
Yes, Senators, and Members of the Committee present today, I'd like to first thank you for the opportunity to speak about this issue in my opening statement. I'm Joseph N. Janis, a real estate broker with Realty Connect USA, and I've been a Realtor for over 47 years. I can unequivocally state that I've never steered or discriminated against anyone who came to see me help find a home. I believe the totality of the video obtained by Newsday and the facts presented in the article regarding my treatment of the two testers demonstrate fair and equal treatment to all. Newsday concluded I engaged in steering by providing the minority reporter with listings that were 58.4% white census tract areas and the white tester listings that were 67% white census tract areas. Simply put, I do not have access or knowledge to the statistical racial makeup of particular census tract. I don't even know what a particular census tract is. These statistics are not something I've ever considered or would consider in representing a client to purchase a home. The criteria I consider in suggesting homes for prospective clients are the details they provide regarding commute, style of home, bedrooms, bathrooms, finishes of a home, and many other factors that are specific to real estate. At no point does race, either directly or inherently, play a factor in how I choose to represent a client or the listings I send. This was not a fair and accurate test in the fact that the two reporters had numerous differences in their criteria. Linda indicated that she definitely likes renovated homes. Jennifer asked to include listings that need a little updating to get more for the money. These factors dictate whether a prospective client is provided with listings in newer condition or not. Linda was starting a new position in Bayshua, while Jennifer and her husband both were working in Central Queens County. This had the biggest bearing on my selection of which listings to send to each. Linda was opposed to short sales, while Jennifer's open to short sales. Because Jennifer had a young child, I eliminated main roads. Linda was open to waterfronts, while Jennifer re-eliminated waterfront homes. Senators, for your reference, my statement includes the timestamp for each of the factors I have described above. In both tests, I spent several minutes explaining the real estate search engine collaborate, which allows clients to specify criteria of homes and geographic areas. These preferences are shared from my viewing and allows me to effectively represent a client and provide showings of homes identified by the buyer. Despite my efforts to provide resources to most effectively search for a home, I was repeatedly asked by news reporters for listings. The conversations and criteria provided by clients is the utmost importance in deciphering their preferences. There is no detail that is too small or insignificant. After all, it's been my life's work to use these details to assure countless prospective homebuyers to find a home that suits their family and loved ones. I welcome any questions you might have, and thank you again for providing me the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you for being here. I do want to acknowledge that we've been joined by Senator Anna Kaplan. Mr. Emiriavari, if you can unmute yourself, please.
Russ, you're on mute.
Yes. Senators and Members of the Committee present today, I first like to thank you for allowing me an opportunity to speak and issue an opening statement. I originally entered real estate as a second career in early 2000s. After my experience purchasing a home, my wife and I bought a home, and no one told us about the various steps involved. We were rushed through the process and never told about the inspection being such an important aspect of buying process. I was never told about what good things or bad things to look for in a home. This is typically the most important purchase of an individual or family in their lives. This experience motivated me to become involved in real estate. I believe it is my passion for helping clients that allows me to be an effective real estate agent. For that reason, I try to give as much information as possible to my clients to assure their home-buying experience is not like the first one I had. Let me be abundantly clear in saying that I did not provide an equal treatment or steer either of the testers depicted in this investigation. Furthermore, the Newsday article indicates that there was a third tester I was evaluated by whose recording equipment failed. Newsday reported that the third tester was provided equal and fair treatment. Unfortunately, Newsday did not provide me with any evidence of the third tester. I don't believe I violated any fair housing law. However, as a result of the Newsday investigation, I now realize that even the best of intentions can be misconstrued and interpreted as something improper. In the wake of the Newsday article, I evaluated how I communicate with my clients. I evaluated my professional responsibility to communicate more concisely and effectively. Since the release of the article, I have completed six separate fair housing education courses with the Leib School of Real Estate, New York School of Real Estate, Charter Real Estate School, Long Island Board of Realtors, Long Island School of Real Estate, as well as a course generated by Realty Connect USA and Andrew Leib of the Leib School of Real Estate and Continuing Education. I have also completed the training commissioned by Realty Connect USA entitled "How Do We Build a Just Long Island?", conducted by Ms. Elaine Gross of E Race Racism. Finally, and most importantly, I am an immigrant myself from Middle East who arrived in the United States in 1975. I have made it a personal and professional practice to look past an individual's race or any protected class. In the context of the Newsday article, the race of either tester was never a factor in my efforts to provide them with the best possible service. I appreciate you affording me the opportunity to speak, and I welcome any questions you might have.
Thank you very much for your opening statement. I do want to point out we've been joined by Senator Phil Boyle, and I'm glad, Ms. Petrelli, you were able to work through the technical issues at the onset, and you've joined us. Before we get to your testimony, and if you could please unmute, I did swear in the rest of the panel before you arrived, so if I may, if you can raise your right hand for me. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Okay. Good morning, Senators and Members of the Committees present today. I'd like to thank you for allowing me an opportunity to speak and issue an opening statement. I'd like to start by saying that the Newsday article has caused me to conduct a great deal of self-reflection in my personal life and my professional life. I must admit that being accused of unequal treatment or implicit bias relative to representing clients in consideration of their race is a significant accusation. I believe that I did not act in violation of fair housing laws and regulations. I know that I had no intention to represent either tester differently in any way. I welcome the opportunity to speak with you about the specific thought process I had and what the videos depict. However, I admit the Newsday article in general has changed the way I conduct business. I have been a licensed real estate agent since 1996. I have never had a complaint made by a client or anyone else for that matter. However, I recognize as a professional, we are always learning and changing how we conduct business. I believe it is incumbent on the real estate agent to remain mindful of any implicit bias we may have. I believe it is important to utilize resources made available to each agent of Realty Connect to assure proper knowledge and application of the federal fair housing laws. Since the release of the Newsday article, I conducted a self-imposed reduction of my business activities to ensure proper education and evaluate how I interact with clients. I voluntarily participated in four separate fair housing courses. First with LISOR, followed by a course with the New York State Association of Realtors. I have attended and participated in the training commissioned by Realty Connect USA entitled "How We Build a Just Long Island?", conducted by Elaine Gross of E Race Racism. I have completed the interactive fair housing course generated by Realty Connect USA and Andrew Leib of the Leib School of Real Estate and Continuing Education from the New York State Association of Brokered Salespeople. These classes have provided a different perspective that I find useful in communicating with clients and assuring that I do not speak or act in a way that would invite scrutiny. While I disagree with many of the methods and conclusions in the Newsday article, I have tried to use the article to self-reflect and more effectively represent my clients and the Long Island community. I welcome any questions you may have, and thank you again.
Thank you all very much. We'll jump right into questions, and I'll start with Mr. Cafarella. You're the broker, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And how many agents are in your brokerage?
Over 400.
Over 400, okay. Now, if I may, you know, I think your word was concerned. You said you were concerned when you initially saw the videos and the information in the Newsday expose, but that after having meetings and speaking with the agents, you felt that there was no misbehavior that rose to the level of discipline? And just to be clear, there was no discipline with any of the agents following this investigation? Is that correct?
Well, when I reviewed, well, the Newsday article actually came out, and it came out in pieces, and it naturally was shocking, I think, to everyone when it first broke. And it broke in a big way, and it broke in a big public way. So I took the time to research and try to view as much as I possibly could, as fast as I could initially, and it quite frankly took a long time to go through all the process. And when I saw everything in its entirety, and after consulting with the agents themselves, and I probably viewed these tapes several times now, I chose not to see that there was any racial discrimination. The spirit of the racial laws was not violated, and I chose not to take any direct discipline with any of the agents. And I did suggest that, like I myself did, maybe we missed something, and maybe I should get back into the real estate schools and see what they're teaching again. And I voluntarily went to a fair housing class along with some of my staff at that particular time, and I did suggest the same to...
And you felt there was no inconsistent treatment that rose to the level of violating fair housing laws? Is that fair?
That's fair to say, yes.
Okay. And you felt there was no steering?
That's correct.
Okay. If I may, I want to put up two clips, the first of which is going to be Clip One from
You don't want to be, I don't think you should be in Elmont. I think you should probably just be Franklin Square.
Okay.
I think that's my thought, you know?
Okay.
I think you want to stay in Franklin Square. I could go there.
Okay.
Here, it's great.
Okay.
East Meadow, okay, no issues.
Okay.
As far as, you know, the feedback that I get from buyers, and I've looked stuff up.
Right, right.
But technically, as a real estate agent, we shouldn't tell the buyers
Oh, okay.
which school district is better. Really, we're not supposed to.
Okay.
Because you got to, you know, a school district wise only, you know?
Right.
Because there's something called a steering. No steering, you know, like steering...
Oh, like a car or something?
No, like a horse, you know?
Ah, okay.
You know, like facing somebody towards whatever you want them.
Okay, okay, I see.
So in our business, they say if you do that, that's not right.
Okay.
And it's not right. Some agents do it, but it's not correct.
Okay.
Because the buyer should kind of, they got to give you information.
Right, right.
So, Mr. Cafarella, around the same time that your agent went into some detail explaining what steering was, he explicitly noted you don't want to be in Elmont. Now, certainly, that seems to me to be steering. Now, what convinced you otherwise after having a conversation with your agent?
Well, that was, I think, 16 seconds of probably several hours of interactions with the clients that Russ had, and I think, not having heard the opening statements from the agents with me today, I think Russ may have handled that in his opening statement and addressed that. And this was Russ's way of explaining, like he said when he purchased his own home, people didn't explain much to him. This is his way of explaining what he can and what's not permitted. It may not have been the most articulate way to go about doing it, but I believe Russ was just trying to explain to that client really what steering was all about, because I...
Yeah, I don't think the question is, you know, his explanation of steering and whether, you know, it was accurate or not. At least, that's not my question here. My question to you is, in light of, you know, him bringing it up on his own shortly after making a note, "You don't want to be in Elmont", you noted after speaking with your agents that you didn't believe there are any violations of fair housing, no steering taking place. What additional context or what explanation did you receive from your agent that convinced you that that statement, "You don't want to be in Elmont," was not steering?
Well, I think it was related to the entire interaction that Russ may have had with this particular tester. I will point out, in my conversations with what I call Russ, his name is Reza, in my conversation with Reza, Reza didn't realize one client from another. He couldn't, he never distinguished one was, I believe now turns out to be Hispanic, and one was white.
What do you think he was referring to when he said you don't want to be in Elmont?
In the context of that whole conversation, I don't exactly know what he was referring to. I'm trying to think back what stood out prior to that interaction as to why he said not to be in Elmont. I don't consider...
So you can unequivocally tell this committee that there was no steering taking place, but then just tell me that you don't know what he was referring to when...
I can unequivocally tell you that that's the case.
How can you say that when you just said you don't know what he's referring to there?
Well, I...
Stay away from Elmont, basically.
Yeah, well, I reviewed the entire video of Russ, and I saw the whole interaction in context, and he offered these clients, and I quote, I wrote a quote down, that I think it's very important to know, that shows that he had no intention and no issue of steering with there, when he said to the tester, "I can show you any home anywhere."
And that's a defense for anything that might come subsequent to that statement?
Well, I wasn't using another defense, and I'd have to go back and review that particular portion as to why he said he don't want Elmont.
Okay.
It could have been his opinion, based on a lot of conversation with that tester, that maybe the best choice of home for him were not in Elmont.
Okay. I would have thought, especially since your opening remarks, and given the additional week of time, perhaps you would have that context at your fingertips, knowing that you would be asked about this. But let's move on to Clip Number One from Ms. Petrelli, please.
Copy if you like.
Oh.
What about something, some form of ID?
Some form of ID?
Yeah, okay. Copy, I just want to see if that matches this?
That matches the name, yes. Um, I'm sort of confused to why I would... Um, I'm sort of confused to why it would need some form of ID though.
Well, I just need to know that this is really where you live and everything so that if we do do the paperwork.
Right, right, right. Okay.
You don't need it?
Yeah, no, yeah.
Ms. Cafarella, is it, um, office policy to request ID of prospective buyers?
It is strongly suggested that the agents can, yeah, can ask for ID at their open house. We, we've done this consistently and, um, we've done it from a safety point of view that agents do feel comfortable asking for form of ID. It's not a company policy. It's strongly recommended that agents.
It is.
Right, it is, yes.
And is it?
From a whole safety point of view.
However, is it problematic if some people are asked for it and some others by an individual agent?
Uh, yes, we realize it's problematic if that agent says, requests some form of ID from, from some clients and from other clients, they do not. There's also incidents where homeowners request that they don't want people in their homes unless we get their ID. And we do respect those requests from our clients.
If I can turn over to Ms. Petrelli, and if you could please unmute yourself. So i- in, in the case of the Newsday testers, you asked the, um, the tester of color for, for their ID, but not the, the white tester. Can you, can you give us some explanation for that?
Yes, Senator, I can. Um, I asked the minority because of a personal life event between the five-month gap between the two testers. It was a traumatic experience that radically altered my understanding of personal safety. I now make it a practice to ask all clients for identification. Realty Connect USA stresses asking for identification for our own safety. I do not wish to share the particulars of this personal event and hope that you can respect my wishes for that.
Okay, um, so what you're saying is the minority tester was the second of the two testers to approach you? Is that correct? And something happened in the interim?
Yes.
So can you say, can you tell us these committees with certainty then that, um, prior to, um, this life event, this personal event that you're referring to, that you had never asked a prospective buyer for an ID?
I probably did not. I, I should have for my own personal safety, but I probably did not.
Okay, and since this, uh, personal event, um, have you asked all prospective buyers for their ID? Regardless of who they are or where they're coming from?
Yes, Senator.
Okay, thank you. I, I may come back for a second round, but in the meantime, I'll turn it over to my co-chair, Ryan Capel.
Great, thank you, Senator Scoopis, and thank you to the witnesses. I'm going to just start with, uh, Mr. Cafarella. You, you mentioned that a whole series of steps that you've taken since the Newsday articles came out. Do you believe that, and you've said, you've said unequivocally that you don't believe anybody, uh, at Realty Connect violated, uh, fair housing laws? Do you believe the articles showed, I mean, wrongdoing, improper behavior? What is, what is your, what is your assessment of the, of the evidence that we've all seen?
The entire Newsday, Newsday article, as I said earlier, was, was quite sensational and it actually unfolded over, over a series of weeks, if not months. And it was a lot, it was, it was, it was an impressive, it was an impressive article. And it was very, very detailed on, on many fronts. So it took us time to really absorb it all, just to really see it. If you want, if you're asking my overall impression of the Newsday article, uh, Senator, am I correct on that?
Well, I, I want that and then your overall, I mean, you've, you've, it's inspired you to take a whole range of steps. And it's sort of like, kind of if, if, if nobody at your firm did anything wrong, why was such a substantial change in your practices necessary?
Yeah, okay, you're correct. You know, you can't be too careful today. The, um, the industry as well as the world is evolving. And what was normal, normal acceptable practice three, four, five years ago is not normal today. What's practiced today is not acceptable, what was practiced six months ago is different than what we practice today. So we, I felt that we better step it up and, and really make sure that we are providing at least the, the, it, the best, the best possible training we could possibly find regarding the fair housing, uh, which was not an admission and should not be construed as we've done anything wrong in the past. I, I strive along with my partners to, to put forth the best fair housing we possibly could throughout our, our, um, throughout our company since we, since we started. So we, we stored out the very best to be sure that any issues would, would never, would never happen again. That's all right, because we're well-trained.
Do you believe it's acceptable today to, uh, give specific opinions about school districts, uh, what school districts to avoid?
Uh, Senator, we, we.
That's a yes, that's a yes or no question. Are you, do you believe it's acceptable to give specific opinions about school districts?
We do not believe that today.
Do you believe that was acceptable a year ago?
We don't believe it was even, why, you know? It, it's, it's, to talk, to talk about school districts was, um, a year ago, did agents speak about school districts? I'm sure they did. And, and, and in the context of this school, that school, the next school, it's certainly something that we trained today not to talk about school districts. In fact, Senator, we, we put together a little no before you go.
Okay, but Mr. Cafarella, again, I'm focused, that's, you've done that recently. I'm talking about a, as things were a year ago. As, as things were a year ago, do you believe it was acceptable in your industry to be making specific assertions about school districts to avoid?
We, uh, we, we, I don't believe a year ago we were encouraging people to talk about school districts.
I'm not asking you whether you were affirmatively encouraging people to do that. I'm asking whether that was acceptable in your industry and in your firm?
In the industry, I would think it was acceptable to talk about school districts.
Okay, is it, was it legal to talk about school districts in that way? To, to, to recommend somebody specifically to avoid a specific school district?
You know, we, we, we brought in, we brought in a lot of fair housing experts, quote unquote. Some of them were attorneys to train on this subject. And talking about school districts was not something they said, "Do not mention." These were state-certified trainers. They were, they were working off curriculum.
Mr. Cafarella, with all due respect, I'm asking you specifically, your, your understanding, your, your license, you're licensed in this business. I'm asking your understanding of the law. Do you, is it your understanding of the law that it is permissible or impermissible to indicate that, that, that a home buyer should avoid a specific school district?
That's not permissible.
Not permissible?
Correct.
It's illegal?
It's not permissible.
Under the law, okay.
Correct.
Um, okay, I'm gonna go, um, Ms. Petrelli, that, that, one of these testers was mentioned already, but you met with a white tester and a, a black tester who were similarly situated. And both said they had school-age children. Um, you didn't provide the, the black home buyer with a list of school districts. I want to, uh, show a clip now of your interaction with the white home buyer. Um, this is number, clip number two, if we could show that.
We have Montauk, which is from Irving. That's twenty-three. We have Seaford, which is six. We have Massapequa, which is beautiful. Which is, you only, if you're in Massapequa, you only want school district twenty-three.
Okay.
You don't want six in Massapequa because that takes in Amityville. You're not gonna like those schools. But six and Seaford is different, so it's good.
Okay, so, so Mr. Dye, we, Ms. Petrelli, we just heard you advise a white home buyer that she didn't want District Six in Massapequa. That's Massapequa because it takes in Amityville and you're not gonna like those schools. What did you mean when you said you're not gonna like those schools?
Okay, I discussed the particular school districts with respect to resale value. The resale value in certain areas and certain school districts don't hold up. It had nothing to do with any kind of a racial makeup or anything to do with that. It was only on resale value.
Okay, are you, are you telling this committee that racial makeup of communities doesn't affect resale value?
I, I don't look at it that way. I don't look at the racial end of it. I'm just looking at the resale value.
Okay, Ms. Dye, again, it's, and we're, a lot of what we're looking at is training, including we have several pieces of legislation about training. So I do want to understand your understanding then and your understanding now. You, you believe it is, it is acceptable today to steer somebody away from a school district if you're doing it based on your perceptions of resale value in that school district?
Today, no.
Okay, was it acceptable a year ago?
I didn't, like, it was just nothing to do with race. So I don't believe I was doing anything against the fair housing. It was just to do with the resale value.
Okay, I understand, I understand that you're testifying that, about, about your intent there. But they, again, there's been additional training and you've, you know, had time to think about this. Do you believe that it was impermissible a year ago to tell somebody that they don't want a particular school district because you're not gonna like those schools? Which I will note, you're not gonna like those schools is not a reference to home values. It's, it's, I mean, I, I don't know how somebody hearing, "You're not gonna like those schools," is gonna understand that your meaning was, you're not gonna like the schools because someday you're gonna sell your home and the quality of those schools is gonna affect resale value. But putting that aside, this is, this is, as a home buyer with a child and you're telling them they're not gonna like the schools. But you believe that that is, today, you believe that is legal and acceptable? If your, if your intent, if, if, if the reason you're saying is about resale values in that school district?
I'm sorry, Senator, but you're gonna have to repeat that because I don't understand.
Do you believe it is acceptable and legal to tell somebody that they don't want to go to District Six in Massapequa because it includes Amityville? If the reason you're saying that is that you believe the resale value of the Amityville schools, uh, will not hold up?
That's really not what my intention was. That's not what I did. As a matter of fact, if you go back to the video, when you go to minute six, where it says, "I'm sure you want a good school district too because it's a great, it's great for resale." You being a teacher, why don't you look at the school districts?
I, I respect, and I don't, just because our time is short and I don't, I respect what you're saying. And I respect you've testified about your intent here. And again, if you want to say you don't know the answer to this, that's an answer. But do you believe it is legal to tell somebody that they want to avoid a particular school district if that is based on your intent to maximize the, the, the home buyer's resale value?
That's, that's not what I did, Senator. I, I had, that was not my intention at all. It was just.
I know, but just, again, Ms. Dye, what you did was said, "You don't want six in Massapequa because that takes in Amityville and you're not gonna like those schools." That's just, that's just a fact. Now, there, there's other contexts and we do have access to other materials. But, um, you believe today that, that statement is acceptable? If your intent, if, if it's based on the resale values in Amityville, rather than whether the particular home buyer will like or not like the schools per se?
Again, what I say, Senator, is that I didn't do it with anything to do with the school district as far as anything racial and steering. It is because of the resale value.
Okay, I'm gonna, my time is up. I may want to continue in a minute, but I'll, I'll turn it back over to our other chairs.
Senator Thomas?
Thank you all. I have a few questions for Mr. Cafarella. Uh, given that you are the broker and all of them work under your license, uh, I'm correct about that, right?
Correct.
Okay. So tell me your obligations under the law and regulations regarding the supervision of agents.
In short, Senator, um, all licenses that work under my broker's license, we are responsible for.
That's it?
Well, uh, that's pretty broad. Uh, uh, how specific would you like me to be?
And tell, tell me, go ahead, elaborate more than just them being your responsibility.
Well, we, we have a responsibility to supervise, uh, which is one of our big responsibilities. And we monitor, we monitor, I don't want to say we monitor all the activities. That would be totally impossible. Uh, but we do supervise all the agents under our license. And we, we, we communicate with them, uh, as best we can. And we try to utilize all latest, all the latest technologies to do so. So everyone has a clear understanding of exactly, uh, the, the procedures and the, and what's expected of them at, at my company.
How often, um, actually, uh, let, let me go back a little. How, how long ago have they started to work under your license? Like, when did they first start to work under your license, all four of them?
Oh, I, I don't have those dates, but I believe, um, all three of the agents with me today have been with me for, for a number of years. I, I don't have that information, uh, with me currently, but they, um, they've been with me for a while.
Dealing, do you, like, when, when you supervise agents, do you, uh, often give them, uh, personal feedback? How does this, how does your supervision work?
Uh, our, our company is maybe uniquely organized, uh, for the, for this where my partner and I, both brokers here, um, our primary responsibility and job is to look after the, and work with the staff and the, um, all our agents. We, uh, we don't do our own personal business and we dedicate all the administrative work to our administrators and we handle all the, all the, um, the agents with any of their brokerage issues. So that's really our, 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 pretty much.
So let's say, so let's say, uh, there is a complaint launched against one of your sales agents. How would you go about trying to, uh, you know, figure out what's going on? And how do you rectify that situation?
Okay, great. So should, uh, should a complaint be launched against one of our sales agents? That would generally come, that would come to myself or my partner. And we would immediately take action against, on that complaint and have conversations and call in the agent involved and do a investigation and handle it with any party that, that may be involved with that. We would handle that directly and personally.
So let's say in the past year, how many complaints have, uh, come up to you and your partner? I mean, you don't have to give me, like, specific facts, but how many have actually come up to you?
Outside of the fair housing forum?
Yeah. No, outside of this.
Outside of the fair housing? It, it's, it's, it's not all that often. It's, their complaints could be from maybe a homeowner who's not particularly happy, uh, an agent's having an issue with other agencies.
But how many, how many this year?
It, it's maybe a half a dozen if I had to render a guess.
Half a dozen, okay.
Put in the side, put in the side that fair housing in the Newsday article, yeah.
And, and, you know, outside of this Newsday article, in the past year, how many agents have been disciplined for any sort of violation?
Well, it, it depends on the violation and it depends on the complaint. And, um, most of the complaints are easily resolved. Uh, agents may have been disciplined. There have been agents who have been let go, um, from this.
So you're telling me this past year, you let go of someone or you disciplined anyone?
I would, I, I, I'd have to go back to see if anyone in the past twelve months has been, has been let go because of, just because of, of a problem or a complaint.
Okay, let me move on. So you supervise about four hundred agents?
Along with my partner, yes.
Okay, and how, how many of them are active?
Most of them.
Most of them. And how many offices do these agents operate out of?
We have one main office and eight conference centers.
Eight conference centers, okay. All right, so you reviewed the videos, right? And in your testimony, in your opening statement, actually, you talked about sitting down with the, uh, Human Rights Commissioner here in Nassau County, Bobby Coloney.
Yes, correct.
What, what did he say, uh, about the videos?
Um, I don't know if Bobby really said much about it. I don't even know if Bobby was aware of it.
He wasn't aware of it?
I, I'm not sure if he was. I don't think there was, he said he had any comments regarding the, uh, the fair housing, uh, and the Newsday article. I I'm not sure if he was. I don't think there was, he said he had any comments regarding the the Fair Housing and the Newsday article. I don't think he was part of the conversation.
I mean, but him being aware. I mean, your your opening statement said, you know, in order to rectify the situation that you're in, you sat down with them like what was the conversation about? Like, what exactly were you trying to rectify?
Well, I it's like we sought him out for advice. We sought him out thinking that there may be an issue with Fair Housing in Nassau County. He is the director, I believe he still is the Director of Human Rights in Nassau County. And I sought his advice.
And what did he say?
He really didn't think it was that big of a deal based on what we let him know.
Wow, he said that?
Well, don't quote me on that and.
Well, you're in a you're in a hearing, testifying. So I don't know how else to take that, but let me move on. Let me move on.
It suggests that we be part of the committee on on Fair Housing that they were thinking of putting together.
Okay, so I want to talk to you about the different programs that were used, which gave potential evidence of disparate treatment, right? So one of the agents that you supervised directed prospective home buyer to use Collaborate, which was to a black tester, and Prospect Match to a white tester. How do these programs work?
Okay.
And who decides, you know, which program to use?
Okay, so if I may explain, and I Collaborate and Prospect Match are in essence the same program. It's with the multiple listing service on Long Island where we could actually input criteria that a customer would like. And based on the criteria that is entered or they enter, listings would automatically be fed to them based on their criteria. So they have access to the entire database into every property available through the Long Island Multiple Listing System. So the Collaborate is just a program that they can go in at any time and change and modify new properties based on their criteria, and it pushes listings to them. You may have used it. I use it regularly. If you're a home search, you would probably use it with one of the search engines as well. And most of the agents do utilize that. So every home, potential home buyer can actually dictate which homes they'd like to see, where they'd like to see them, what their interest is and what their criteria is. And they can do that without the aid of of an agent today.
But is there any sort of difference between the the platforms? I mean, if one is recommended to a white tester and the other one recommended to a black tester, is there some sort of difference there?
Yeah, my understanding is that Prospect Match is the old name for the service and Collaborate is the new name for the service. MLS went through a transition. And I believe Prospect Match, us old times, like myself, we call it Prospect Match. They now called Collaborate. But it's in essence, it's the same program, Senator.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Thomas. I know that Senator Kavanaugh has some questions, but a couple of things first. One, I want to acknowledge that some time ago, Senator Jim Goran joined us. And just a reminder to any committee members that if you do wish to ask questions, please just raise your hands, use that function within Zoom and we'll get you on the list. I do just want to follow up on something very quickly with with Mr. Cafarella that was part of the exchange with Senator Thomas. I just want to revisit something that you just said. In characterizing your outreach to the Nassau County Human Rights Commissioner, you described his response to the allegations within your company as, quote, "not that big of a deal." I want to give you an opportunity to perhaps revise those comments, given that you're under oath. I because if that is in fact the case and that he viewed them as not that big of a deal, I suspect that our committees would want to follow up with him. So do you want to just elaborate a little bit on that exchange?
I'll try to do my best to clear that up, and I appreciate the opportunity to allow me to do that, Senator. I don't think anyone, I may have misspoke when I said it was not that big of a deal. And I don't know how early on it was after the investigation that I sought out Bobby. And I will say this, that those of you that know Bobby, and I refer to him as Bobby, he's a very effervescent individual. We've known him in the past, early on, many years prior. So we we thought it'd be a good idea to speak to him just to see if there's anything that we can do. Should there be an issue, should anyone believe there was housing issues on Long Island? That we'd like to be part of the solution and not part of the problem. And that's when the committee issue arose. And he said, look, we if we put together a committee, I believe if if I think the the Nassau County executive was thinking of putting that committee together, would we like to be part of that? He said, we'd be honored to do that. So I don't want to characterize him as him saying not that big of a deal. I don't think anyone, everyone has taken this very seriously. So I misspoke when I said he didn't think it was a big deal. Maybe the individual instances, or maybe the way I described it to him maybe didn't raise raise his level of concern with us.
So so just to be clear, in in reflecting on the individual cases in your company, that Newsday that was included in the Newsday expose, your feeling is that the the commissioner did not have a high level of concern after speaking with you and seeing the videotapes regarding your specific agents?
No, 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 I let's let's take that back. I don't agree with that. It's a everyone has a high level of concern when it comes to Fair Housing, including him. I don't think he actually saw any of the videotapes that we were referencing, where we met with them. But he always has a level of concern. After all, he's the Director of Division of Human Rights.
And so I guess I I think I'm more confused now than when I started this line of questioning. So what was his takeaway, in your opinion, of your specific agent's behavior, as alleged in the Newsday investigation?
We didn't speak about specifics. And I don't think we made him aware of specifics or he knew of the specifics of the article. We mainly spoke about if if we'd like to be on a committee, would we be interested in that?
So so there was no conversation about the individual situations?
I believe we didn't have conversations about the individual situation. No.
Okay.
Again, this was this was a while back ago. And once again, if you do know, if you do know Bobby, he's he probably did 95% of the talking that day.
Senator Kavanaugh?
Thank you, Senator Scoopis. Just a quick question for Mr. Emirio Vari. Am I saying that correctly?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you you said in your in the clip that was shown earlier, you said, you know, some agents, you know, you described steering. Actually, I think, you know, a solid definition of it. I like thinking about it as a horse rather than a car. I think that's kind of a evocative image. But you said that, you know, some agents do it, you don't do it. What did you mean by some agents do it? Are you aware? Have you seen this behavior in other contexts?
At the time, being this was, mind you, it was about 2016, which is about four years ago. Yeah, most agents and most buyers even, folks that, you know, that were, they were talking about schools on Long Island, they were actually talking about, asking questions about the schools and stuff like that. You know, so that's what I basically meant.
Okay, so you so your perception is that, you know, this is four years ago, your perception is that that time it was not unusual to engage in steering and and
No, 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 no. The word steering, that's why I went out of my way to explain what a steering was because I don't condone it. I do not.
No, I understand. I'm not I'm not suggesting you you thought it was a good idea for people to do it four years ago, but you 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 described it and then you said some agents do it. You don't do it, but some agents do it. Is that, I mean?
I'm saying that the trainees that I took at the time, you know, nobody that I remember, you know, most agents sort of, and even the buyers, as I said, the buyers that were coming to us and asking questions, they were specifically asking about schools. So we had to indulge them in tools. And then that caused, you know, me to learn about the grading, the school grading that actually Newsday published many times and they were online. And I actually directed these folks, anybody that would come to me, I said that, you know, the information is online.
Right.
And you can go and check it, please. And then, you know, you decide.
Okay, so we had, we had, we had, you know, several folks last week, including, I think, the entire contingent from Douglas, Alabama, and tell us they're not aware of any instance of steering anywhere on Long Island in the industry. So I just I just thought that your your perception and your testimony was somewhat different. Mr. Cafarella, so you, you know, saw the exchange I had a moment ago with Ms. Petrelli. Do you, and I a follow up sort of on a question I asked you before, is it? Is it acceptable for an agent to tell somebody that they're not going to like the schools in a particular school district? If they're doing that because of their perceptions of resale value in that school district?
That's that's a two-part question. You know, last last night I was watching TV and it was the National Association of Realtors Commercial Lab and promoting local knowledge, go to a Realtor today because of local knowledge. Many, many buyers, they they seek realtors out for local knowledge. That's some of the local knowledge they've always relied on in the past on the Realtor, as well as other local knowledge. So, you know, that I think it's a two-part question. Resale value plays an important part in in purchasing a home. And people want to know about that, and people do want to know about school districts today. We don't talk about school districts today. Was it acceptable four years ago? I probably say many agents did talk about school districts four years ago.
Has the law, to your knowledge, has the law on that point changed in the last four years?
I'm not aware that the law has changed in the last four years, but the but the perception of the answers are certainly interpreted differently today than they were four years ago.
So so again, Ms. Petrella, Ms. Petrelli went through a list of school districts that collectively were about 87% white. She then said, you don't, you're not going to like the schools in Amityville, the the racial, Amityville is 34% white. It's about 22% less, a percentage point less white than the average. If she says to a buyer, you're not going to like the schools in that district, that can be acceptable depending on what her intention is?
I think she made it clear that buyer, what her intentions were. And she did say because of resale value.
Okay, she certainly didn't say because of resale value in the clip we saw. But again, if if you if sorry, just to be clear, Mr. Cabral, if I if I'm a real estate agent and I have a white home buyer and I list all the white school districts, and then I say, here's a majority minority school district, you're not going to like that majority minority school district because of the resale values? Well, that's permissible?
Well, of course not, but Senator, let me just, let me just.
No, but again, I'm sorry.
Hang on one second, if I may. We don't, we don't have that statistical information. We've never had that.
Again, Mr. Cafarella, is it it is, we apparently, you know, Ms. Ms. Petrelli has testified that she had a perception of the resale values in that school district.
Yeah, and she clearly stated to the buyer, I'm sure you want a good school district because it's great for resale. She stated the context why that's true.
Ms. Petrelli, may I, if you can unmute yourself for a moment?
Am I there?
You are. Your picture is gone, but your voice is there. So if you can hear me, that's fine. You do you have any any sense of the racial composition of of? Do you have any sense that Amityville School District may be less white overall than some other school districts?
No, I don't.
You've never noticed anything about about Amityville that's different from other communities in Long Island?
No.
Any of the brokers here have any perception of Amityville School District as opposed to other school districts? Mister, yeah, Mr. Janesi, I'm not sure I'm saying that properly. You've been, you've you've gotten off easy here. Do you? Do you have a perception of Amityville School District? And the and the have you ever noticed that Amityville School District is two thirds non-white?
Yes.
Okay.
It has no bearing on showing homes there or not. I show homes to everyone.
No, I understand that, but just that's something you've noticed. Ms. Petrelli, you've never noticed that Amityville School District is two thirds non-white?
No, respectfully, Senator, I have not.
That's that's you're telling me that's right. Mr. Cafarella, are you aware that Amityville School District is two thirds somewhat less, at least somewhat less white than other school districts on Long Island?
I grew up in Massapequa. I do know that, yes.
Okay, so you know that. And if you know that, and you're inviting, putting aside the the clip you saw, if you know that and you're advising a home buyer to avoid that school district because you're not going to like the schools, are you telling us that that is proper and legal? If the reason you're saying that doesn't come from any racial animus, it comes from your perception of the home values in a school district that is majority minority?
Well, in the context of resale values, that's correct. But I I think you heard from Peggy and and R A, they're not going to, they're not going to steer anyone anywhere, regardless of the school district. But if you saw the entire context, Senator, with all due respect, she she asked them to go and check out all the school districts. She was willing to provide that particular tester with phone numbers of schools so they could do their own home and their own.
Again, but Mr. Cabra, we're talking about the the permissibility of a statement, you're not going to like the schools. Your testimony is that that statement is permissible, was possible then and presumably is permissible now because the law hasn't changed. If you're, if it's based on your perception of of property values and resale value, rather, you can you can single out a school district as having bad resale value. That's permissible now and presumably is permissible then.
Context of value, just like it would be north or south or east or west or someplace or on a main road. It has to do with resale value, and that's what she articulated.
Okay, I'm I'm, I think we have a different perception of the law. All right, Mr. Cabra, are you aware of any studies that suggest that resale value? The changes in resale value is highly correlated to the racial and ethnic composition of neighborhoods?
I have not.
Okay, I again, I have 49 seconds left. We've spent a lot of time both today and last week. So I will end there, but I would just, I would urge you to, you know, read the newspapers. There's there are numerous studies that suggest that, including a I think in the last 72 hours in the New York Times, there was a fairly extensive study reported on. And, you know, again, it is, it is a widely perceived fact among researchers and many people in the real estate industry that values in homes have increased very substantially in community, in white communities, and much less so in communities that are much are are different in their racial and ethnic composition. And so we talked last week with some of our experts about making sure that to the extent there is training, that it would be valuable for people to understand that the train, you know, the impact of the decisions brokers and agents make. And, you know, we're we're singling out individual people today like Ms. Petrelli because, you know, we have that evidence before. But there's nothing, we're not trying to suggest that this is an isolated incident or that this is especially bad behavior in the context of industry. The whole point here is that we've had testimony that this kind of behavior is commonplace. And we also have the, you know, we we're now hearing that somebody who is licensed in this industry believes it's okay to tell people to avoid a school district based on resale values. And, you know, for me, that suggests an ongoing problem, a continuing need to make sure people understand the impact of these decisions.
So I would, Senator, I would invite you, if you can, if you're so kind, to look at that article. I and I appreciate you sharing that.
Okay. I'll end there.
Okay, thank you, Senator Kavanaugh. I I don't see any other senators who wish to, oh, Senator Disco, is that your hand?
Yeah, that's Ranger.
Please, go ahead.
Yeah. Mr. Cafarella, to you. And thank you, thank you for being there and your your testimony today. So far, I've heard a lot of questions in relationship to what the Realtors offer or suggestions of guiding in certain ways. But I want to ask you this question to see if if this would be appropriate. Because there might be a fine line between what you're asked and then given the opportunity to to give an opinion or just offering an opinion. If if I was to come up to a Realtor or you and say, I only want to buy a house or live in a community where the house I buy has a very high resale value. And then I started to list communities. Would it be appropriate for you to say, you don't want to live in that community if it had a low resale value?
Uh, I, I wouldn't say that and I wouldn't recommend we say that. Uh, I would, I would suggest they, the research would, would provide some research to that client and they make their own decision.
If they should.
And, and maybe the, the, the research that I was unaware of, that Senator Kavanaugh just mentioned, may, may be appropriate to use at that point. We, we, we don't generally use all the information that many of you rely on and that Newsday relied on with, with racial demographics and breakdowns. And I know Newsday provides an extensive school research paper every year that we don't utilize as well. And we don't for, for reasons that it could alter and maybe possibly cause somebody to say, hey, I didn't realize, you know, maybe I should steer you away from that area. And I know that's a terrible word to say, we don't use that word, but maybe we shouldn't look there because, you know, blah, blah, blah. We don't, we don't use that information at all, Senator.
If, if, if when you said that to them, go do your research, they said, well, I just want to know, does that, does this community have a high resale value or not?
Yeah.
Would you answer?
Yeah, I, I would.
Would it be illegal? Do you think it's illegal to answer them? No, it has a low resale value, doesn't have a high resale value.
If, if they were to ask me that direct question and say, hey, Bart, you know, does this area have a good resale value? I would, I would say, my opinion, it may, yeah. Yeah, I, I would always recommend we go back to the statistics because that's how I'm basing what I'm suggesting on. And, you know, based on, based on the facts that I can ascertain, and we have many methods to do that, that are not subjective.
If they asked you, I only want to buy a house in one of the best school districts in this county. And they started to name the school districts and, and they said, according to the test scores and the graduation rates, is this school district one of the best in the county?
Yeah, we, we, we would offer that opinion today. You know, we put together this little, little sheet that they can research the schools on their own and determine what's important to them. You know, I learned, I learned long ago in my career that what's important to one person may not be important to another, that it's all, it's all their personal preferences. But I will, I will even expand that conversation if you send it out another time, if you'd like, because whether you agree with it or not, school districts play an important role on, on Long Island. And they play, they play an important role in, in values and, and resale values. And I'm sorry to say, but that's just, that's just, that's just a fact.
So when, when one of your Realtors was asked, or there was an interest in school districts, and she mentioned, happened to mention eighty-seven percent of them, and they happened to be white, but they also happened to be the best school districts that, that the person was interested in, uh, why would that not be appropriate?
Um, first of all, I, I don't think anyone realized, anyone knows that those school districts are eighty-seven percent white. We certainly didn't know it. One of the, the interesting facts we learned through the Newsday investigation is the demographic breakdown of these neighborhoods that we, we, we provided listings for to people. We, we didn't realize the, the racial makeup of these neighborhoods. Newsday provided us that information based on their studies. We, we don't know that, we don't have, we don't provide access to that. I wouldn't even know where to go get, to get access to that. So it just so happens that maybe they all were eighty-seven percent and maybe that's the whole South Shore of Nassau County. I don't know.
And I took your point when, uh, someone asked about the town or, or community of Ellamond. Was that what it was about? And he said, you wouldn't want to live there. You said, I'd have to go back to the tape.
Yeah.
And when you said, go back to the tape, did you mean that a whole series of things that the person said, I'll give you an example, which just making up out of my head, I don't want to buy a house where they have houses close to each other or I don't want to buy a house that has very small lawns, I want larger lawns. And then later on in the conversation, the Realtor said, well, you don't want to go to Ellamond. It might have nothing to do with the racial content. It might do with, has small lawns and houses very close together. Wouldn't that be the case?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. I, I think barring any last minute questions, co-chairs, are you okay?
Can I, can I just, if, if I may, just one more statement, just a reminder. So again, Mr. Cafarella, and with apologies to all watching for laboring this, but are you troubled at all that, again, this, these were matched testers? So Ms. Petrelli had a white home buyer with children and a black home buyer with children. And she specifically told the white home buyer to avoid Amityville, which you're, which you, she meant, I've been aware, she testifies about, you're aware is significantly a majority minority district, that you're not going to like those schools. And she doesn't tell the black home buyer that, even though they also have schools. Is that because, you, you think that's because black home buyers aren't concerned about resale value and white home buyers are? Does it trouble you at all that, that, that you're not going to like these schools is said to a white home buyer to children, but not to a black home buyer with children?
I was troubled by that, yes.
So again, having reviewed this material, you know, you testified before that you think that the material in the investigation requires changes, you know, it requires you to change, to rethink, to, to sort of get up with the times, sort of. But that no, you know, that there was no improper behavior by any agent. And it's just, it's, it's perplexing that, you know, I, I'm not sure what the distinction between being troubled by it and not finding it improper is.
Yeah. I would, you know, again, I, I, the full context of that and the conversations and understanding it, I, I, I felt okay with. I felt troubled by it. On its outset, it looks very troubling and everything seems to be what it seems to appear. But like I said in my opening remarks, we, we not only want to go to, to above the letter of the law, we also want to go to the spirit of the law. And that's why, uh, as, as the broker of this organization, I, I, I may have, may have gone a little overboard with fair housing, but I don't think I could ever go overboard because it is that important of an issue. And I'm sure Peggy would, would never say that comment again in relation to values, home styles or any, any, any sort of indication because it can be construed and it can appear to be racist. And that's one of the things we learned with implicit bias. What you mean and what you say and how it's interpreted could be two completely different things as we are learning here today. So, you know, our agents are, are, they have to be much more, and much more conscientious of exactly how they present, present themselves and, and present everything to, to a buyer because it could be construed differently than what it's meant.
If your agents or your company treat black home buyers and white home buyers differently as a, and as a pattern of that, is that a violation of the fair housing laws even if nobody intends to discriminate?
It is, yes, it would, yes.
So you can, you can, you can violate the law in your current understanding without intending to disadvantage the, the home buyers. If you, if you treat them differently, if you, if, if that behavior that we saw in those tapes became systemic where white home buyers with children were told, you're not going to like the Amityville school districts, the school district, but you're not going to like the Amityville schools, but black home buyers were less likely to be told that. That would be a violation of the fair housing laws.
I'm, I'm not sure of the question. If the question is, 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 do I, did I intend to hit that person on the sidewalk? No, but in my, but I, but I drank too much that day and I hit him. So, but it wasn't my intention to hitting, I'm, I'm not clear as to what you're asking, but I was.
I, I suspect you're not a criminal defense attorney. I'm pretty sure I was drunk and I hit him isn't a very good defense in an assault case. But it's, just to keep it in the context of fair housing, it is not, in, in your view, it is, it does not require an intent to discriminate, to, to disadvantage black home buyers in order to violate not just the spirit, but the letter of the fair housing law. Is that your understanding today?
I'm not sure what you're asking about, say that.
I'm asking whether, I'm asking whether in a, in a, in a, in a, in a decision about whether a particular activity violates the fair housing law, is it necessary to show that the person who is accused of violating that fair housing law intended to discriminate, intended to disadvantage one home buyer over another?
Yeah, I think the intent is irrelevant today.
You think it's irrelevant or relevant?
I don't think it's, I think today, if, if it's a clear cut case of violation of, or discrimination because one's black and one's white, it's, I'm not, I'm not interested in the intent.
Doesn't matter with it then. And again, the law, as far as you know, the law on that has not changed in the last five years.
I don't, not in that respect, no, Senator, the law has not changed.
Okay, uh, thank you, I think that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I do want to ask Mr. Janis a couple of questions. We haven't heard too much from you. At the, when the Newsday investigation was released, you and I think everyone was provided an opportunity to, to view their findings and comment. It, it does appear as though you took up their offer to view what they had, but that you declined to comment. Can you just talk about why you declined? Can you describe, I don't think we've had any of the agents so far, today or last week, describe what that interaction was like with Newsday when everything came out?
Well, they, I, we originally got a letter telling us that we were being investigated by Newsday and the statistics. I was devastated when I got that letter. I was sitting in my den with my wife and I was, my dad watched Martin Luther King in Washington. I mean, I was raised that you treat everyone the same. And all of a sudden being called a racist or a steering. And it devastated me and my wife turned around and said, go into the den, into the living room and see who's there. My teenage daughter had three friends there, it was like the United Nations. I've always treated everyone the same way. And then to have a newspaper say I did something wrong. So I wanted to go see what I did wrong. But I got there, they wouldn't let me bring my phone in so I could record what was being said. I had to go through a metal detector. I had, they, they put me in a room where a woman kept looking at me every couple of minutes to make sure I wasn't touching anything. And I wrote notes down. And what I did was I wrote everything I said with the black reporter on a piece of paper on one column. And then when I played the white reporter, I highlighted the exact same things I said. I treated both the exact same way. So now why wouldn't I give them a response? I thought they were prejudiced, I thought they were looking for headlines, I thought they were trying to sensationalize. I'm not saying steering and racism's right, I'm not condoning it at all. But they were looking to sell newspapers. And my feeling, and when I spoke to my attorney, my personal attorney before that, anything I was going to say, they were going to twist and put to their benefit and make me look bad. So why should I make any statements at all? Very honestly, I have no idea why I was even mentioned in the Newsday story. I treated both people, if you watched the videos, you saw I treated both of them the same. So I, I have no idea on, they both looked for different requirements, they both asked for different things. So to go there and give Newsday more to put into their paper to make me look bad? No, I wouldn't go on the record with them. So I, I hope that answers it. I'm sorry, I'm a little bit moaned here because quite honestly, it's been for the last year and a half, having to sit down with your children and tell you've been accused of something, when you know it's false, that's not, it's wrong. And what they did to me and to my family, it, it, it was wrong and I don't appreciate it. I appreciate you having given, this is the first time I had the chance to defend myself in two years. I thank you so much for that.
Thank you, and that does answer my question. And for whatever it's worth, you know, I, I think the fact that ninety-eight percent of our questions thus far have been trained at the rest of the panel, I think maybe a reflection of, you know, the varying levels of concern that, that we have as, as committees and co-chairs with the evidence that, that we've seen. So, if I may, um, I, what do you make of, of what we've heard today at, at this sort of part two of, of the hearing? I don't know if you watched last week, certainly we tried to get this panel into last week's hearing. But if you did watch, I'd love to hear what you thought of last week. And, and what do you make of just generally the fact that it appears as though, and putting aside your situation, looking at everyone else around you today, last week, if you, if you did tune in, the broader Newsday investigation, what do you make of the fact that it seems as though there was not a single agent disciplined after all of this? Clearly, and I think we've gathered this from a number of the panelists today, your colleagues, that there is some acknowledgement that steering exists. Not a single agent, I mean, perhaps you and, you know, a, a number of others could, could argue that the allegations were not credible. But to suggest that every single allegation in the Newsday expose was not credible, I think is outrageous and outlandish.
I agree.
What do you make of the fact that not, not a single person lost their job, not a single person was disciplined?
Well, you know, I can't speak for other real estate companies and I can't speak for other individuals. But I think you expecting the brokers to do something when there's state hearings that are pending before them, when there's board of Realtors hearings before them, you're asking them to make a determination on someone's innocence or guilt based on a newspaper article or tape. And meanwhile, how could someone, if, if a broker terminates their agent, they're admitting to the Department of State that they made a mistake. So as long as they're open investigations, you can't have people, it, it, it's like putting them in a double edged sword. But I will say this, someone, the, the number one question is asked to every real estate broker by every customer is, how are the schools? What are the schools like? And I always tell them, go speak to the administrators. But when agents are asked those questions every single day by so many, the public has to be made aware that agents aren't allowed to answer those questions, in addition to us being trained not to answer them. But we're asked those questions every single day by almost every customer.
If I could just, I, I, I thank you for, for that answer. I can't just hone in on the first part of what you just said. So, so you believe that the reason why we haven't seen any discipline from brokers with their agents is concerned that that discipline might preempt the either hearings or Attorney General's investigation or the state agency oversight? That's the reason why you think that there hasn't been discipline?
Well, I used to own my own company at one time, three offices. And I wouldn't put my, I, I, yeah, I, I would think that if I, if a broker acknowledges something, they're putting them in a position where they're now admitting they did something wrong before the Department of State and the Board of Realtors.
Mr. Cafarella, is. Yeah, thank you for that. Mr. Cafarella is, is that, do you agree with, with that statement? Is that why there has been no discipline in your company? Not because of, contrary to what you've said over the past hour and a half, contrary to, you know, what you've said, which is, you know, I don't believe that any of the behavior rose to levels of discipline. Have you not taken discipline because you did not want to preempt these other investigations?
No, absolutely not, no, no. And I, and I fully understand my responsibilities as the broker here. And no, that's not the reason at all. We, we, we actually chose to take the education route because I do believe what I have learned throughout this process, Senator, is, we, we could, we could talk a lot about intentions and implicit biases. And Elaine Groves' program really pointed out implicit biases and I think that, that we all have. And is that an excuse for, is that another way of saying it's unintentional? No, but I, I think, I can't comment like, like Joe said, I can't comment on other, other broker situations only because I haven't looked into them. I was concerned about my three agents and their conduct and I wanted to make sure that I was satisfied that everything was, was fine with that.
Let me ask you, if I may, so say one of these state investigations, Attorney General, Department of State, whoever it might be, comes down and does find violations and revokes one of your agent's licenses. I, what's going to be your response to that? I mean, do you remain defiant at that point that, you know, they did nothing wrong? Or do you perhaps reflect, well, maybe I wasn't looking at this properly and I should have taken some disciplinary action? What's going to be your response? have taken some disciplinary action? What's going to be your response if that happens?
Uh, I, I, I don't expect that to happen. Um, and I'm not sure what my response would be because I'm not sure I understand the question. If, if one of our agents is found to be guilty in one of the forms of fashion, uh, um, I'll, 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 listen, we, we've kind of, I think we maybe see things a little bit different here. Uh, and, and, and I know the prison, you're looking through everything here as well. Uh, so we, we, I couldn't give you that answer right now.
Okay. Fair enough. Senator Kavanaugh or Thomas, do you have anything further?
I think I'm done with questions, uh, other than, you know, thank you to all the panelists for, uh, you know, participating today.
Senator Thomas?
I have a few questions for Mr. Cafarella. Sorry.
Don't apologize. Go ahead.
So, um, just going back to our original questioning, right? Uh, about the supervisory ability, how, uh, do you otherwise keep tabs on what an agent says that could be disparate or even unintentionally discriminatory? Like, how do you keep tabs on these things?
I, I, you know, most of the work being done today is being done from home right now. So it's almost impossible to keep tabs on conversations people have. We, we don't censor their phone calls. We don't censor their, your emails. Um, so I don't understand that. We can't keep tabs on conversations.
Okay.
Uh, the, the best, the best I, we try to attempt to do, Senator, is we, um, we, we, we try to train them over and over and over again and teach them and, and, um, and let them know that should any issue, should any, should any situation come up that they're not sure how to handle, they know where to go for those answers.
So last week during, uh, some testimony and number of agents testified that their training was inadequate. Can you talk about the trainings that you give your agents?
I, I can. Uh, we've provided, there you go, a lot of samples to, uh, Senator Scoofus, that of what we've done. Um, most of the trainings we do are broker giving trainings and experts out of the real estate business. If you want to talk directly about the fair housing training, I, I, in my opening remarks, we, we've done tremendous amount of that over the years. We've quite, we've really stepped it up now with our online program because I believe the state, the state mandated training and the approved training from the state is somewhat outdated and certainly ineffective.
Okay.
Because it's compliance training and I've been through those courses. I think some of the investigators have been through those courses. Uh, and we realized that it's just not cutting it in the real world today. And we can do a better job. And we've taken it upon ourselves to do that at great cost and expense and time allocated to this. And I, 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 I would, I offered the training to the Division of Human Rights to take a look at it to make sure it meets with their approval. And I would do the same with you, Senator.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Cafarella, thank you for that answer. Now, can you tell me if any of the agents, like when they go into the training, they feel like they are confident enough after the training to sell a house? Like, do you get any sort of like feedback on their trainings? Because we heard from a number of, uh, agents, uh, that they were inadequate. They just had an attorney spew a lot of legalese and they were just on their own.
Yeah. Uh, good question, Senator. Thank you. Uh, our, our, our organization doesn't, we rarely, I should say never, we rarely take on brand new licensees. Most of the agents that join up are, have, have some field experience and have worked in other companies. This type of training, both my partner and myself do tremendously. We do our own, we do a lot of the fair housing training ourselves. So it can be interpreted into the real life situations. We don't put people in a room, sit down, here's 10 hours worth of training. They come out, what have they learned? They really don't learn. So when we developed our current program, uh, I, I, I did a lot of research on this. And I not only wanted a program that was, was effective, but I wanted to make sure our agents understood what was being taught. So our internal program has questions and answers. So they make sure there's, there's testing in our program. That if you don't pass the test, you have to take the program over again. And we're able to do this and monitor this program, you know, over, over the internet. Um, so they understand exactly what we're trying to teach them. And it's not the compliance training that the state would provide. It's our internal real life training. And it talks about what happens. And we'd like to think it talks about real life.
Would.
As I may, I'm, I know I'm a long-winded with this, but I'm a little passionate about this.
Got it. I understand. But, you know, my time is limited here.
Okay. I appreciate that. Maybe we can meet at another day then.
Yes.
Because I know you're local.
Yes. Now, in terms of one-on-one trainings, do you give those to, uh, sales agents?
We do. We, we can talk with the regulars individually as well.
Okay. And how often is that done?
Uh, as needed. Um.
Do they have to specifically request for one-on-one? Or is it like part of the training regimen that you, that you have?
Uh, they request the one-on-one. They would request it, yeah.
Would you recommend after all of this, that it be not a request, but mandatory that they do a one-on-one with an experienced, uh, sales agent before they go out?
Well, that's exactly how we do it, Senator. We, like, like I said earlier, most of our agents are experienced. Any brand new licensee that we take on, which is very few, they do work with an experienced agent.
Okay. So.
So we, I'm sorry. So we don't just put them in a, a, a two-week training program and throw them out into the street? No, that's, that doesn't happen.
Look, going back to the number of agents that work under your brokering license, right? Uh, do you believe that you can supervise, uh, 400? Is that like something that you can actually do?
Yeah. It's, a lot of people ask that question. How do we do that? We do it quite effectively, um, through a lot of the, because our organization was built to support our salespeople and to supervise our salespeople. So it's, we, that's the primary role of my partner and myself to do that, along with our, our, our administrative debts. They have to help us with that. So that's what we do.
Do you think, I mean, if we were to introduce legislation to limit the number of people working under your license, would that be an issue for you guys?
Um, I, I, well, you're asking an opinion now. And, um, um, I, I, I would love to talk to you at another time about that, quite frankly, Senator, because I don't think that would be effective in, in your, in your ultimate goal.
Well, ultimate goal is to make sure this doesn't happen again. And I think that from listening to a lot of testimony here for the past, I mean, the, today and, uh, last week, it just seems that, you know, there are way too many people that you guys have to supervise and it's just not adequate enough. So.
Yeah.
I mean, said, you know, thank you for your responses and, uh, over to you, Senator Scoofus.
Okay. Uh, we'll go out for one last call. Uh, any final questions? Seeing no hands. I want to thank, um, each of you four for your testimony. Um, it's been almost two hours. Um, and, you know, I, I think this was informative. It was enlightening. Um, and we appreciate, uh, the answers. We, we know that sometimes you, you've been on the hot seat these past couple of hours, but we do thank you for it. It helps us inform I, our path forward now as legislators in how to respond to, um, you know, what we've seen and heard. So thank you very much for, for being with us.
Thank you.
Thank everyone for, uh, for, we're tuned in, um, for tuning in. And I want to particularly thank my two co-chairs, Senator Thomas and Senator Kavanaugh and our staffs and central staff who, uh, as usual, with these very substantive hearings, uh, put in an enormous amount of work, um, uh, helping us make sure that these run smoothly, uh, and properly, and that we maximize our, our benefit and get all the information that we're looking
Great. And I, I, yeah, I just echo, echo the, the sentiments. So my, thank you, Senator Scoofus and Senator Thomas. And yeah, all of, all of the work from, uh, Andrew Stanley, our committee counsel, uh, and housing and all the other committees. It's been a great collaborative effort. And we also just would remind folks who are, uh, tuned in that, you know, we began, uh, last week's, uh, the beginning of this hearing by mentioning we have a variety of legislative solutions. A couple of them were mentioned today, but we will be pursuing, uh, those as well. So, um, but again, thank, thank you everybody who's been involved in this.
You good, Senator Thomas?
Yes. Thank you so much to everyone. Thank you to staff. Thank you to, uh, central staff for getting this panel here, um, after last week's debacle. And, uh, thank you everyone that testified. God bless.
Okay. See you all soon. Thanks very much.